Let the minutes reflect that we have a call on the full court. First, we're gonna have a prayer by Pastor Conrad. Of course, Lutheran Church here in Florisville, follow him. Fire play.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, bless the leaders of our land that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to others around us. Stand down upon those who hold office in this court the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Though with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their office to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
When joined us through the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, the United States of Texas, one state under God, one law, one community, indivisible.
And item number four, we have certificates of completion and award. Act being entered into the minutes, we have a certificate of training by Audrey Calick for the Security Corps. Rachel Gonzalez, Cyber Security Corps. Second one for Rachel Gonzalez. And a third one for Rachel Gonzalez. Gail Ridge, Certificate of Completion for Birth Registration Certification. Mr. Pecade, Stop the Bleed Course. James Cannon, Stop the Bleed Course. Garrett Chapco, Stop the Bleed Course. Randy Carter, Stop the Bleed. Don Hayes, Stop the Bleed. Robert Lerma, Stop the Bleed. Randy Richardson, Stop the Bleed. Audrey Calick, same course. Rachel Gonzalez, Stop the Bleed. Jimmy Bay, Law Care, Stop the Bleed. Ramon Serna, Stop the Bleed. Andres Ramos, Stop the Bleed. Mauro Rodriguez, Stop the Bleed. Pedro Trevino, Stop the Bleed. As we be entered into the minutes. Agenda item number five, we have our county extension reports. One from the county, Magrillife. Make sure if you have the reports in there. Agenda item number six, we have Ms. Brendan Trevino, our county auditor. We have a nine o'clock 2024 tax rate hearing.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This morning's hearing, I will read the notice of the public hearing. The no new revenue tax rate is a tax rate for the 2024 tax rate that will raise the same amount of property tax revenue for Wilson County from the same property in both the 2023 tax year and the 2024 tax year. The voter approval tax rate is the highest tax rate that Wilson County may adopt without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate. The proposed tax rate is greater than the no new revenue tax rate. This means that Wilson County is proposing to increase property tax for the 2024 tax rate. However, the total tax rate per $100 of value currently is .413133. Proposed for 2024 is 0.414748, which is effectively an increase of 0.001615, less than one cent. The average homestead taxable value, which is based on the CAD, is currently for 2023, $270,015. For 2024, it was $301,368, which was an increase by the CAD of $31,353, or 11.61%. This means that the tax on the average homestead currently is $1,116, and for 2024, it will be $1,250, which is an increase of $134. Total tax levy on all properties in 2023 was $21,257,134, and for 2024, that equated to $23,176,233, which was an increase of $1,919,099. Of that amount, $904,029.20 was his tax revenue to be raised for new property added to the tax rule this year. So at this time, Judge, the public hearing is open for any comments or discussion.
Do we have any public comments on this agenda item?
So then we'll move to item B.
Okay, so we're gonna go to agenda item six B, Discuss and Take Action, Vote on Setting Salary, Expenses, and Other Allowances for Elected County or Precinct Officers on LGC 1-2.01.
Yes, Judge, so per that statute, all salaries, expenses, and other allowances of elected officials and/or precinct officers were sent to each office on August the 14th in their department-proposed budgets. This budget includes a proposed increase to the county's minimum starting wage to $1,893, which currently it is at $17.24, proposing a $1.69 increase to all employees and officials.
Commissioner, I'll entertain a motion on agenda six B.
Brendan.
Yes, sir.
Is the motion just to accept?
To vote on the setting salaries and expenses as presented.
Or do we need to say we're setting the salary to $100? I mean, that's taking me word.
You can just word the motion exactly as it's written on item B.
I'll make the motion, Set the Salary, Expenses, and Other Allowances of Elected County or Precinct Officers as presented by Mr. Brendan. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. Do we have any other discussion or further discussion on six B? Here none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Let's have it, the motion passes. Agenda item number six C, Discuss and Take Action, Adopt Budget for 2024-2025, LGC 111, period 008.
The final adjusted budget, proposed budget, is before you today. There were only two changes that were made in the proposed budget that was presented to you on August the 26th. Those included adding the Laverneia Library Grant, which was inadvertently left off. So I increased the transfer from the library's fund balance and included the expense of $9,000. And secondly, the public notification software was not included in the Emergency Management Department, so I decreased the non-departmental reserve line and included the expense of $5,390. In the proposed budget, you will see in your bound copy, and it's also posted on our website, there is a budget overview that I read on the 26th, which explains in detail how revenue is generated and what this budget is made up of. So I won't go through it again since I'd already gone through that on the 26th. But if you have any questions related to the budget, now would be the time.
Our Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on six C.
Make a motion that we adopt the budget as presented by the order for the 2024-2025 budget year.
Motion been made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Is there any other discussion on six D? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Ayes have it, the motion passes. Agenda item six D, Discuss and Take Action, Vote to Ratify Property Tax Increase, LGC 111, period 008, subsection C.
So per HB 3195, this budget will raise more property, total property taxes than last year's budget by $1,919,099, which is an 8.2849% increase from last year's budget. And of that amount, $904,029.20 is the tax revenue to be raised for new property added to the tax rule this year. And so at this time, Judge, you would entertain a motion to ratify the the property tax increase.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion for six D, but it has to be worded exactly like.
No, that's the next agenda item. No, it's just to ratify what I just read here.
Okay, got it. I'll entertain a motion for six D. I'll make the motion to ratify the property tax increase.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. We have any other discussion on six D? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Ayes have it, the motion passes. We've moved to six E, now we're on the right document.
Yes, sir, and one and two are combined in the same motion.
Discuss and Take Action, Vote to Set the 2024 Tax E1. MNO 2024 Tax Rate .404355.
And so the motion is written together, yes, sir.
And number two, INS 2024 Tax Rate .010393. So you're asking for two motions in one?
No, sir, the motion is that one with that's green tabbed.
Okay.
Everybody's bad guy. Everybody else don't do it. And this is only because it's very, very small. I move that the property tax rate be increased by adoption of the tax rate of .414748, which is effectively a 4.2% increase in the no new revenue tax rate. And a .390915%, less than 1% increase in the 2023 property tax, with a difference of .001615. This tax rate is made up of an MNO rate of .404355 and an INS debt rate of .010393, for a total tax rate of .414748.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. We have any other discussion on reference six E? One and two. Here none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Ayes have it, the motion passes. Agenda item number seven, we have discussed through three agreements for the use of public space between Wilson County and Comino Real, Community Services. Comino Real wishes to extend these lease agreements. It's the same one that we sign every year, Commissioner. They're just asking for that agreement again. Does anybody from Comino Real wanna get up and talk with me?
Good morning. Just very briefly, I wanna say thank you for providing the public space for us to be able to render our services. We have the two offices that are provided as in kind from Wilson County. And then we have a third office that we actually pay a lease for, and that is our crisis restoration. We have lawyers and staff that are out of that office, and they provide the, offer the 24/7 crisis response services. So I was hoping you will extend and allow us to continue operating out of those offices.
And did you wanna ask?
Oh, she's just.
We thank you for your services in our community.
Thank you, sir.
It's a lot. Our Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number seven, extending our lease agreement.
I'll make the motion that we extend the lease agreement between Wilson County, Comino Real, Community Services.
Motion been made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Is there any other discussion, further discussion on agenda item number seven? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Ayes have it, motion passes. Yes. All right, we're gonna pass on agenda item number eight since we changed the location. It's gonna be at the Expo Center, not here at the Courthouse parking lot. It's a better venue and just a better setup for the volunteers. So no action taken on agenda item number eight. Agenda item number nine, we have Sheriff Stewart, Discuss and Take Action on Setting Sheriffs and Constables Fees for 2025. Sheriff Stewart couldn't be here today. He did, we did talk this morning. He has no problem with the setting of, its current settings of the constable's fees and the sheriff's fees. Want me to pass that on to y'all, Commissioner? So I'll entertain a motion, accept the sheriff and constable's fees for 2025.
I'll make a motion to accept the sheriff's and constable's fees for 2025 being the same as those that were set for 2024.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Any other discussion on agenda item number nine? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Ayes have it, motion passes. We move to agenda item number 10. We have Mr. Lyle Husstettler from ACOG, Consider and Take Action on a Resolution of Intent Establishing the Wilson County Pace Program. Mr. Husstettler, I want to apologize. We did not, we were a little confused on why we needed a public hearing. Now we understand why. We talked with the county attorney's office. Y'all, it's not normally the same kinda thing we do for a public hearing. So we're gonna re-vote on this again, and then after day, we'll be posting in the paper for a hearing. Okay?
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'll keep this pretty quick. This is very similar to what y'all had, what y'all had approved on your August 12th Commissioners' Court meeting. The reason we have to do this particular document, this resolution of intent again, is because the previous one that y'all adopted in August specified a public hearing date of August 26th, and that did not happen. So this resolution of intent before you is gonna be setting the public hearing date for September 23rd at the next Commissioners' Court meeting. Other than that, it's the exact same program. We still think it's an excellent economic development tool. City of Florisville is having an Economic Development Forum on October 15th, and I'm really looking forward to talking about PACE with your broader business community here in Florisville, and hopefully, you know, in the rest of the county too.
All right, do you have any questions? Thank you, sir. Our Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to accept or take action on the Resolution of Intent Establishing the Wilson County Pace Program.
Make a motion that Wilson County entered into agreement with Alamo Area Council of Governors for the purposes of establishing a PACE program.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. We have any other discussion on agenda item number 10? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Ayes have it, motion passes.
Thank you.
We'll get that hearing. Thank you. Agenda item number 11, we have Brendan Trevino, our county auditor, Discuss and possibly award the following bid. We're gonna do it individually?
Yes, what is 11A?
11A is 25-1, it's a flexible base materials asphalt.
Okay, we can start with that one.
We'll do it with 11A.
Okay. So each of you received the bid tabulation with notes from my office. We did note and notify you that, to keep in mind that some vendors added notes to additional fees and charges, which was page 13 in the bid packet. Just to let you know that these fees will impact the total amount that the vendor will charge. So Kristen advised you to make sure that you took a look at the bid packet. Some vendors also submitted their own attachments with notes that were not part of our bid packet. So that may need to be addressed as well if you decide to award or accept all bids as you have in the past. I don't know if you want me to re-announce who the bid packets were received from, or if you already have that information and you're ready.
Let's go ahead and, yeah, let's go ahead.
Okay, we received from 181 Materials, Aggregate Movers LLC, Atascosa Materials, Ron Tex Materials, Colorado Materials, Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions, Simpson Crush Stone LLC, and Vulcan Construction Materials LLC.
Our Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on 11A.
I'll make a motion to accept all bids on flexible base material, asphalt material, and emulsion bid.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. We have any other discussion on 11A? Here none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Ayes have it, motion passes. We move to 11B, 25-1001 Vault Gasoline and Diesel Bid.
Yes, so we received three bids for Vault Gasoline and Diesel. They were from, excuse me if I don't pronounce this correctly, Arguin Degui Oil Company, LTD, Great Lakes Petroleum, and MidTex Oil. And you, again, you should have the bid tab. I have it here. And I'll go ahead and read these rack price per gallon. And this is the San Antonio distributor rack price per gallon as of July 11th. For Arguin Degui Oil, for ULS LED Red Dyed, was $2.49, $2.4999 cents per gallon, with a profit margin of 55 cents, for a total bid price of $3.05, $3.0499. The brand was Splint Hills Unbranded. And for Highway Diesel, it was $2.4955, with a profit margin of 55 cents, for a total of $3.0455. And unleaded gasoline was $2.3065, with a margin of 55 cents, for a total of $2.8565. Great Lakes Petroleum, US LED Red Dyed, was $2.4840 per gallon, with a profit margin of 23 cents, for a total bid price of $2.7140. Highway Diesel was $2.4805, with a profit margin of 23 cents, for a total of $2.7105. Unleaded gasoline was $2.4331, with a profit margin of 23 cents, for a total bid price of $2.6631. MidTex Oil, Red Dy Offro Diesel, was $2.4890, with a profit margin of 29 cents, for a total of $2.7790. Highway Diesel was $2.4855, with a 29 cent profit margin, for a total of $2.7755. And unleaded gasoline, $2.3065, with a profit margin of 29 cents, for a total bid price of $2.5965.
Our Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on 11B.
Well, we can discuss it. I'm making a motion that we accept all vendors on item number B for 25-1001 Vault Gasoline and Diesel Bid.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Any other discussion on 11B?
Yeah. So I, Great Plains will only deliver to us. The facility here in Florisville is open. It is a separate entity.
Are you talking Great Lakes Petroleum?
Yeah, Great Lakes, yes. Great Lakes, yeah, I said Great Plains.
Great Plains, I wasn't quite sure if that was somebody else.
Formerly John's.
Well, it's still gonna be John's Oil.
Okay.
He didn't, he only sold his distribution list. He's gonna maintain that store. He will not, he will not give us the discounted prices. He'll charge whatever, he won't. He's not gonna do all the federal tax refund. So, I mean, for me, that means I'm gonna have to buy some tanks, which is no big deal. But other people are off of, so for Emergency Management, Magrillife, whoever's using one of the other county vehicles means if they go over there, they can use a credit card and charge it or whatever, but it's not gonna be at that bid price.
We do have a representative here from Great Lakes Petroleum. Is that something that you can answer to, or did?
So we do provide tanks. So if that's something that you guys need, we provide.
Come up here, sir.
I'll go out over the internet and wish you the microphone.
Sorry, guys.
I'm Chris Schaefer, sales rep for this region for Great Lakes Petroleum. So if your concern was buying tanks, normally, we do provide them for our customers. They don't charge. We don't charge service fees or rental fees or delivery fees on our field. So if that's something you're.
I'm not certain that that is the concern. I think the concern is because we utilize, we go to John's Oil's facility. And what Commissioner Martin is saying is, according to John's Oil, they don't have to abide by the contracted price if we were to award it to you because they did not.
It's a different business, they didn't bid it.
Right.
Yes, we do have some vehicles here in the city that drive over there to get fuel. I don't know how many there are, but that's the problem that it creates. I don't know how big a problem that is, but we just may have to set, we could set a county tank, you know, with the sheriff's office or something.
Oh, so to not incur that additional expense?
Yes, right.
For sure, right. Yeah, because, yeah, we want to have the, you know, the yard ready, catch the pull up and, you know, service it. But all our. Big sheriff has a big old tank right now.
No, he wants, I think he wants a bigger one. But we can talk of it later because I know he had some questions. Yeah, he wants to move it. But at any rate, that was my only, my only point. The other, the other provider is Alamo Rado. There were some difficulties higher.
All right. And you don't have a problem with buying tanks possibly at the sheriff's department for?
Yes, sir.
Is that a different charge, or?
No, no, sir. We do our tanks based on the usage rates. And then, so, yes, sir, there's no additional fees with the tanks that we provide. If something goes wrong with the tank hose, you know, filters, pumps, any of that stuff, you call us. Generally, we're out there, the tanks can be tried to fix it. We don't have any service fees attached to that as well.
I was under the impression, I don't know where this, where this, I'll call it a rumor started, but that you were gonna have like a solar panel on there where y'all would know how much fuel is in the tank. Is that, is that something that you are planning on doing?
Yes, sir, so we can talk about that as well. Yes, sir, so we can talk about that as well. Generally, what we do for all of our tanks and our customers' tanks, if they have their own, we can put a monitor on it. What that does, it allows us to track your fuel, how much in that tank. It's as important for us as it is for you guys, so, you know, we can kind of build our loads out ahead of schedule, so we can see that you're going to, you know, based on your daily usage is ready to be out in, you know, just for example, two or three days. So what we do is that we can kind of put you on the schedule for a couple of days, so that you, you know, guess, and there's no, you know, extra fees for that as well.
So the question is, is, you feel about the bid, or if y'all don't bid next year, what happens to all that? Y'all pull y'all's tanks back?
If, yeah, I mean, we'd have to, obviously, you're not getting, you're having so many tanks.
We'll make sure that's all right. If anybody jumps on, like, Commissioner Martin has no doubt, so I'll have my way.
Sure. All right, thank you.
So, thank you, Commissioner Martin, for bringing that up. So just for clarification, then, whoever is awarded this bid, will, we will not be able to utilize John's Oil for, and so any county official who has a vehicle will need to utilize these vendors here, or whoever's awarded. So we'll have to make that notification as well.
Commissioners, there is a motion in the second. Is there any other?
I did sort of go into asking Commissioner Aiken, you want to work with the Laredo guys, I mean, you're significantly higher. I mean, I don't have a problem, but I mean, you just need to take that and do a contract.
Yeah, we have to do a contract.
He's okay, so next.
Yeah, no, but I'm talking about the other one, the one that's from Laredo.
No, the first one?
The only one that's hard, yeah, it's hard to say.
You would cause your office additional work to have to do the contract.
Well, it wouldn't be an additional contract that we...
Whatever we know that they're so much higher than, okay. So, I don't mind amending my motion, it's just that, involving what we did with the flexible base materials, asphalt, and all of that, why not do the same thing with?
Because, well, and the reason that you have historically awarded all in both material and in fuel is because each precinct utilizes one that's more, that's more convenient for your precinct. In the cases of fuel, if none of the four precincts are going to utilize a fuel vendor from Laredo, then there would be no reason to award it to that particular vendor. If one or more of you are going to utilize MidTex and Great Lakes Petroleum, then that would suffice to just award it to the two.
Okay. And I don't have a problem with amending my motion.
Okay, you want to rescind it and restate your motion, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So, I make a motion that we accept the bids from Great Lakes Petroleum and MidTex for 25-1001, bulk gasoline and diesel bid.
Second.
Motion, amended motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Do we have any other discussion on 11B? You're none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay. Eyes have it, motion passes.
Sir, do you have any cards we can use?
Absolutely.
Sure.
I can, I can run out and grab one for you.
Okay. One of the other questions, how quick can you get a tank if that happens, over here?
So generally, it's two to four weeks is what our kind of delivery terms are. Most of our tanks are brand new, so there's a, you know, a time to, we have to put in a service order and have it there. But we can go through all those details and see what you know.
Yeah.
But I'll run out and grab the concrete.
Bring about a half dozen, please.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Item number 12, we have Ms. Tava Traeger to discuss and take action on permission to paint a mural on the former bridge in Sospango, Texas. Ms. Traeger, are you here, ma'am?
Morning, greetings, everybody.
Good morning.
Yes, this is simply as stated, just permission to paint a mural in the former bridge there in Sospango, Texas. Every, I drive by there to church there. I just can see it on the map where it is exactly located, and it's just in need of some much needed beautification when I see it. And I've been a community member, by the way, in that area about 12 years now, but I just recently learned of it having its 100-year anniversary coming up in November. It's going to be celebrating 100 years, or the church is, Our Lady of Perpetual Help is, can have, has been there for 100 years. And I just thought what a beautiful way to commemorate and to celebrate with this mural of the church and its contribution to the, to the community. Actually, I learned reading about the history, it's, was requested by the community back then, in the early 1900s, to establish a church since more and more people were moving into that area, and it's been around ever since. So I think it's just a beautiful way to celebrate and bring some color and much needed celebration to the events.
Commissioner Martin, who owns the bridge?
So, to the best of my knowledge, it is.
So it's, it's the concrete one past, given out of Calabars, yeah, there, okay.
Going north, yeah.
So it's actually a railroad bridge?
It's a railroad bridge, yes.
Well, see, that, that may be a problem for us, because the railroad is the one that's going to have to, it doesn't belong to the county. And we've had to have some dealings with them, especially on the Camino Realty project, am I right, Commissioner? They didn't want us to go any further than the end of town. So, I mean, we could try to get you a contact for them?
If you could, I would greatly appreciate it, because right now...
Probably your best bet, because, you know, Tammy Rea Reed, this other one's friend, I don't know if you've heard or know her, but she, I think with Junior Store and painted the one that's there now.
Yes, yes.
You know, a few years ago, because there was a bunch of graffiti up there, we did, we did cover the graffiti, because it was kind of vulgar. And, you know, to my knowledge, nobody from, you will probably not be able to get anybody from U.P. to answer your question. Nobody from U.P., as far as I know, has ever objected to whatever has gone on.
And that's what I had heard before, but I said, let me bring it up, and maybe they might have a contact for the railroad, or?
I mean, you know, unfortunately, it all boils down to liability issues. Somebody slid down the embankment and got hurt or broke their arm or something, you know? And we don't have permission to give you permission to do that, because it does not belong to the county.
Right.
Unfortunately, I mean, because I had talked to some other folks from the church there, you know, and they asked me the same thing. I'm like, I don't really know what to tell you, because it's not county property, so we can't say, sure, go ahead and do it. I don't think anybody here has an objection to it being painted. I think it helps promote the community, and, and I think because we blocked out the graffiti, I think people have paid attention and are more watchful of the kids that run them up over and over there sometimes, you know? And so it hasn't...
And I'll put some anti-graffiti covering on it.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, it's your own, you have the recommendation, I mean, I just...
Well, I mean, there's the authority, you can, I mean, I can't watch to do that, but I mean, you could be quite confident, you know, if that goes.
If you could find me a contact, I'd appreciate it, but I had heard that before, that there was no answer, no response. Maybe because it's abandoned, maybe, I mean, a former bridge, it's not really, I'm guessing, I don't know.
They, they don't use it.
They don't use it, right.
There's, there's talk, yeah. Maybe, maybe it will. I mean, it's been everything from, well, maybe down to both, because let's see, NEPA leads rail service again, to all the way to Corpus Christi, so, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
There's the railroad, there's the, the big boys that, that own everything, and if you don't know that, they'll, you know, they'll remind you.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I would, yeah. Because I, I've called several different contacts that I've been getting, and I can't get anybody to call me back.
Yeah. Should we make an effort on, on new contact, or just contact that we can?
Let me check with the Historical Society, because they've tried, also because of the Camino Real Trail that's in here. I don't think they ever got anybody to call them back, but at least you could try, so.
Okay, okay.
Because it's, it's basically, as, as far as we know, in Wilson County, at least that segment from the Bear County line, all the way down to the southern line, that, that all belongs to U.P., except for where, like, both was able to paint there, there's a lease agreement here in Fort Hills. The rest of it, for the most part, now, there's people that claim that they own it, that they got it from the railroad.
Yeah.
They can't prove it either, so, or they haven't, so.
Okay, okay.
That's our, our best, Commissioner.
Okay, so will you leave contact with me, or how will I contact you eventually, or what's next?
I'll, I'll, I think I have your number already, so I'll get back with you today. I'll get you a number to contact.
Great.
I wonder if the Historical Society, see if they can guide you there.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you.
I mean, we, we're supportive of your effort, but we don't have permission to give you that.
All right, but I just, let me just bring it up formally, and let's see what can be done. Do appreciate your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item number 13, we have Ms. Doris Morales, Camino Real Services, discuss and take action on Camino Real Services' proclamation to declare September Suicide Awareness Month in Wilson County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for having us here. My name is Doris Morales, I'm with Camino Real. I'm the Mobile Crisis Outreach Team Lead for Karnes in Wilson County, and I'm also the Facility Team Manager for the Community Restoration Recovery Center. That is where we provide our manhole services. We also provide veteran services out of that facility, and substance use services. Thank you for having us here, and I'm along here with my staff and administration, is also here this morning, R.C.O. We're here to present the proclamation for Suicide Awareness Month to declare September Suicide Awareness Month. I could read it, Judge, or you could read it?
You can read it, ma'am.
Okay.
We do have your signs, we have permission for you to sign.
Thank you so much. I'll go ahead and get started. Whereas September marks Suicide Prevention Month, a time to remember the lives lost to suicide, the millions who have struggled with suicidal thoughts, and individuals, families, and communities that have been impacted. And whereas, during the month of September, the national suicide rate is approximately 15.5 per 100,000 population, reflecting a continued need for strengthened mental health services, public awareness, and prevention strategies across a county and nation. Whereas, past 2024 in the United States, one person dies from suicide every 11 minutes, resulting in 136 deaths by suicide each day. Whereas Texas suicide attempt rate for high school students is higher than the national rate. Whereas the past year has presented our communities with challenges and led to transitions that expected or unexpected, welcomed or not, can be unsettling, disorienting, and stressful. And whereas, this is a time in which individuals, organizations, and communities around the country join their voices to amplify the message that suicide can be prevented. Whereas, knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate with someone they are concerned about, and reaching out to local resources. And whereas, we know that connecting, working with, and supporting one another can help prepare us for the future. And whereas, all Texans are urged to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards zero suicides. And whereas, the month of September is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and provides the opportunity to educate our community about the warning signs for suicide, and how to reach out and connect to those experiencing an emotional crisis.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to accept proclamation. Make a motion to accept proclamation. To declare the, the suicide awareness.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Do we have any other discussion on item number 14? You're none, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay. Eyes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Morales.
Thank you. We have a small token, but we're going to pass out to you.
Thank you.
Anyone a picture?
Yes, please. Uh-huh. And...
Item number 14, we have Jim Stewart, County Sheriff's Office Progress Report. Sheriff Stewart could not be here today, and he didn't have a report to submit, so we're all good. Item number 15, Ms. Genevieve Mathenius, County Clerk, discuss and take action on Commissioner Court minutes.
...reviewed by the county judge and county attorney's office.
Give you a few minutes to look that over, Commissioner, and we'll call for a vote. All right, Mr. Bell, entertain a motion. Motion to accept, minutes, that's what you mean. Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner King. Do we have any other discussion on item number 15? You're none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Eyes have it, motion passes. Item number 16, we have Jalen Offord, Hunes Resource Specialist, presentation of payroll and personnel change.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Christopher Wabena was hired as a Corrections Officer for the Sheriff's Department, making 1,893 per hour, $41,346,40 annually, effective today, September 9. Kyler McBlain was hired as a Corrections Officer for the Sheriff's Department, making 1,893 per hour, $41,346,40 annually, effective today, September 9. And Lindsey Manuel was hired as a Tax Customer Service Specialist for the Tax Office, making 1,635 per hour, $34,000 annually, effective September 3.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Offord? Item number 17, we have Ms. Brenda Threveney, our county auditor, discuss and take action on county bids.
I have a total amount of $350,144.14, which is just slightly different than the total amount on your report.
All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn in seven minutes, that's what you need.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner King. Do we have any other discussion on item number 15? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Ayes have it, motion passes. Item number 16, we have Jaylen Mott, Resource Specialist, Presentation to Payroll and Personnel Change.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Christopher Wabena was hired as a Corrections Officer for the Sheriff's Department, making 1,893 per hour, reporting 1,0346, 40 annually effective today, September 9th. Kyler McBlain was hired as a Corrections Officer for the Sheriff's Department, making 1,893 per hour, reporting 1,0346, 40 annually effective today, September 9th. And Lindsay Manuel was hired as a Tax Customer Service Specialist for the Tax Office, making 1,635 per hour, $34,000 annually effective September 3rd.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Mott? Item number 17, we have Ms. Brenda Thirneor, County Auditor, discuss and take action on county bills.
Um, I have, um, a total amount of $350,144.14, which is just slightly different than the total amount on your report. We had a change this morning after the report was, uh, ran, um, with one invoice that included tax. So, we removed that. So, the total amount, the revised amount on your report should be 3, 5, 0, 1, 44 and 14 cents.
Can you hear the officer?
Commissioner, have a question.
No.
You have a question?
He's not on.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to take action on county bills. Item number 17. Do you have a question?
Yes.
Sheriff's not here. This is a deal. Martin.
Sir, go ahead.
I think I've got a computer.
Yeah, we talked about computers and...
Uh, that may be, I don't know. I just don't hear, yeah, I don't know without pulling the actual invoice. Uh, that may be office, office equipment on office computers. That would not be related to the people.
Could also be licensing renewals. I mean, I know we're going to have to buy them all, those computers are done.
That's, that's what I was asking, this is our, the start of what we talked about.
They're actually being taped together, cardboard stuff.
And what you were talking about.
Everybody eight years old.
That could be that.
That's, we started the process that we talked about, Mr. Martin.
I will verify, those are not for vehicles that let me go apply. And I believe they will offer...
All right, I'll entertain the motion.
Make a motion to pay the bills that's submitted by the county auditor in the amount of $350,144.14.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Any other discussion on item number 17? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay. Ayes have it, motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion been made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. It's 9:55 a.m., we are adjourned.